Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the May 1st, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kater.
Here.
Vice Chair Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioner Brant Oliver.
Here.
Commissioner Cor.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, general plan amendments, zone changes, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project, along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
Public Statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on Madam Clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak.
Non-agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items that are not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no speakers for Item 3A, Madam Clerk.
Agenda Item 3B, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Please note if you're here for non-consent public hearing, Item 6A, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak at a later time. Seeing no speakers, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
Please note, all matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for comment, or separate action. Make it a motion approving consent items 4A.
I'll make a motion to approve items 4A.
Commissioner Strickland, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Cor. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Okay, hold on.
Chair Kater.
Yes.
For the record, Commissioner Biddle showed up at 5:33.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Commissioner Biddle. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearing Items.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. Please note if the item is not removed by the commissioner, by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing none, does any staff, or does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item?
I don't wish to remove it, but can I, is this the time I can make a comment on it?
We would remove it, and then make the comment, and then close the hearing. Yep.
Okay, well, I don't want to keep it longer. I guess we could do that, then.
Okay.
I just want to make a comment on it.
Was it on, so you're requesting 5A moved to the public hearing portion?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Martin.
I also, just for the record, would like to second, I would like to move Item 5A to the non-consent public agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Strickland.
So there are no other items under 5?
So I'm going to try to ad lib this, because at this time, all consent public hearing items have been moved to the public hearing portion of the agenda, so we don't need to cast them.
We don't need a motion, yes.
Okay. Then we will now move on to the non-consent public hearing items. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearing Items.
Now is the time for the non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes total time to provide rebuttal comments. Please note that individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If preferred, written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please remember to be respectful of others participating in the hearing, and please refrain from repeating remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Ms. Ingle, would you please provide us your staff report on Item 6A?
I'd like to introduce Courtney Camps, Principal Planner over Land Division Section.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Courtney Camps, and I'm a Principal Planner with the Development Services Department. I'm here today to present Item 6A. Item 6A on the agenda is a request to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and approve vesting tentative tract map 7471 for a proposed project at the southwest corner of Morning Drive and Palladino Drive. The applicant plans to subdivide 83.97 acres into 363 single-family residential lots, five landscape lots, five private landscape lots, one retention basin, one private retention basin, and one private park, with residential lot sizes ranging from 4,836 to 15,552 square feet. This project builds on actions taken prior to the expiration of vesting tentative tract map 6191, which included rough grading and development plans. Delays related to the Mojave Pipeline and landscaping design required modifications, prompting the introduction of vesting tentative tract map 7471 to address these challenges. Staff has reviewed the development for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. An initial study found that with mitigation measures for air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and traffic, there would be no significant environmental impacts. The mitigated negative declaration was made available for a 30-day public review, during which comments were addressed by consultants. Notifications were sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius and published in the local newspaper. Staff also received written feedback, which was addressed in a memo in the background material. We received additional correspondence today, provided to you this afternoon. The applicant is here today to respond to your questions. Staff concludes that the project complies with CEQA and is compatible with its surroundings, land use designations, and zoning. Therefore, staff recommends the commission adopt the resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and approve vesting tentative tract map 7471. That concludes my presentation of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camps. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, Chair Kater, distinguished members of the commission and staff. My name is Brandon Martin. It's B-R-A-N-D-O-N-M-A-R-T-I-N. I represent LGI Homes, the developer of this project. If you talk to people about local real estate, and I have a feeling the commissioners probably talk about that with people a lot more than I do, you hear stories about how there's good opportunities for investors, maybe from the Bay Area, to come and buy a house that most of us can't afford, but there's not a lot of opportunities for folks that we went to high school with, people who are doing exactly what they're supposed to do, pursuing careers here, they're just making the kind of incomes that we make here, and sometimes they feel priced out of the market. And that's what LGI Homes is addressing with this project, which is a project aimed at taking renters and turning them into first-time homebuyers. We have somebody who comes and speaks on just this topic, Evan Licht, and we do this in various jurisdictions. The last one I was with, we showed a little bit of our product, and the person we were talking with, he wasn't at the City of Bakersfield, sort of maybe lower self-esteem jurisdiction, but they took a look at it and said, "We can't afford that." But actually, this is, it's not affordable housing, which is a term of art under the law, but it is market-rate housing that is for lower-income folks in our community, and it's something that I think they'll be very proud of. Let me tell you a little bit of the history of the project, too, which is something I'm proud of. We had an expiring map. We could have litigated that. I've been here before, your commission, on multiple times, representing clients who had a map that was vested years and years ago, sometime in the early 90s, and we get through because we have a legal right to, but the impact fees are much lower. It's not necessarily fair to the city. Building standards are different, and sometimes we think we won, when maybe we shouldn't. But this client decided to pull their tract map and work with the city and redesign the map entirely, with the engineering team behind me. We met a lot of the city's extra goals. It's higher density than it was by quite a bit, and again, more affordable and walkable. I grew up in Hagen Oaks. For some reason, that's where everybody likes to do their trick-or-treating. This might be the type of place where you can do your trick-or-treating in the future. And I think it's, again, a project we can all be part of, or proud of. Let me go ahead and introduce our team. It's San Joaquin Engineering, and they can tell you exactly the details of the project, and a little bit more about our mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes. Good evening, planning commissioners and city staff. My name is Hunter Troxel, T-R-O-X-E-L, and I work for San Joaquin Engineering locally. San Joaquin Engineering is the lead consultant on vesting tentative tract map 7471, and we are requesting your support in approving this map. This is one of many developments by LGI Homes in the County of Kern, and they are targeting the first-time homebuyers in our community. A brief history of the project has been mentioned. It is a rebirth of tract 6191, which was an R1 development approved and rough-graded in the mid-2000s. Like many projects during the recession, it was abandoned, and LGI eventually purchased it, and with some complications, it eventually expired in 2023. With the changes to the recent, the recent changes to the zoning ordinance, we have increased the lot yield from 279 lots to 363 lots, with a substantial number of these lots being in the 5,000 to 6,000-square-foot range. Our client is proposing a small park near the center of the development and two separate linear parks as amenities for the residents, making it a walkable community. We believe the subdivision will provide new and cost-efficient housing for the growing area of northeast Bakersfield. We also believe this neighborhood is in line with the city's current vision of single-family residential development. We'd like to thank the staff for their efforts in preparing this map for this commission, and we'd like to thank the Planning Commission for taking the time to review this. We are glad to answer any questions the commission may have, and we hope to have your support in approval of this map. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no additional speakers in favor, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, Commission, city staff, and the birthday girl in the back. My name is Lori Pisante, and I am the Director of the Kern Cuija Chapter of the Sierra Club. We serve Kern County, Kings County, and Tulare County, and I believe this commission is in receipt of comments from our Conservation Chair, Mr., oh, I should say, Dr. Gordon Nipp. He has thoroughly reviewed the documents in this agenda item, and in particular, I wanted to highlight the stewardship that this commission has taken on. It's burdensome. There's zero question about that. As a planning commission in the city of Bakersfield, an area that has the worst air quality in the nation, my children have health problems, I have health problems, we all have nebulizers, you shouldn't even know what a nebulizer is, but yet we do, right? You are tasked with looking not only at this project, but the cumulative impacts of this project. This area, I drive past it every day to take my daughter to piano, right? Right there by Juliet Thornor Elementary, where I've sent her to summer school. It's also where you had the explosive-level leaks of methane in the Morning Star neighborhood. I don't see any reference to any of those other adjacent properties. Some are mentioned, but not all. You've seen specific itemization of ways in which the MND is inadequate, and I refer you to that, I won't bore you with those details again. But we have to be smart about how we develop. We have to be smart about it. And the tables related to GHGs, completely nonsensical. There's no explanation or analysis of those tables. They don't even correspond with the other GHD calculations for the other adjacent properties that are already on the public record, and it contradicts its own expert report. This is not a sufficient MND. We have to be thinking about how to look at those cumulative impacts, and of course, with regard to the special species out in this area, there's no plan whatsoever for how to have those species that are almost gone, right? And it's not just about the species themselves, it's about the impact on the food chain, the impact on human beings to be able to survive on this planet. We don't have a lot of time to deal with these greenhouse gas emissions. We don't even have a climate action plan in this city. We're like the last municipality in the entire state to have a cap. That is insane to me. I already had my insurance on my house canceled because of climate change-related impacts, the wildfires, and I'm sure I'm not the only one in this room who's had that happen. We already see an increase in valley fever spores, there's nothing in here related to that either. We're experiencing extreme heat, and with the combination of the bad air quality, that means that when it does get hot, our ERs start seeing admissions going up like this, heart attacks and strokes. We already see migration related to places outside of the United States where people don't have water anymore. Not even companies are going down there to grow food anymore. We are seeing migration related to climate change. We are seeing very expensive impacts related to climate change. If we are not serious about handling every single agenda item that comes before this planning commission with regard to climate change and cumulative impacts, then we are doing a disservice to the young people in the back of this room. I highly recommend that you look at Mr. Nipp's list of mitigations, especially related to the wildlife movement corridors. The traffic is already bad on Palladino and Morning Drive right there. It's already bad. When even more cars are going down that road, those kit foxes have no chance. There are things we can do, planting trees for the Swainson Hawks, putting movement corridors through there, kit fox dens, artificial dens. Please look at those, and also, there's the other folks in our chapter, these folks have master's degrees and doctoral degrees, they are very smart people, and they're offering their services for free to you to do an urban forest management plan. They've already been working with the city of Fresno to emulate what they have already done. So please, I implore you to not approve this at this point, and to reach out to the folks in our chapter who are willing to help support the city's efforts to do the right thing for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers who wish to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners and city staff. My name is Jeremy Bowman. I'm a resident of the adjacent tract to the south. This high-density development is not congruent with the overall rural nature and scenic vistas of this area. Specifically, on Eagle Ridge Street, the lot sizes are 5,000 square feet. Across the street on the south side of Eagle Ridge, the current lot sizes are about 8,000 to 9,000 square feet, and the frontage is drastically different. Also, on Bald Eagle Street, the street was built orienting northwest and southeast with the intention of providing owners with the vista of the mountains. Most of the lots will be low enough to where that won't be interfered with, but Lot 17 of Phase 3 specifically will directly interfere with the view of three of the lots. So I'd like some consideration as to potentially combining that with Lot 18 to the north. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers who wish to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no additional speakers in opposition, does any commissioner have any questions for the public or staff on this item? Please remember, this is not the time to... What? Rebuttal's after comments. Yeah. This is comments, so, or questions, not comments. Please remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, only time to ask questions. Commissioners, any questions? My apologies. Pull up my... Okay, Commissioner Cor.
I have a question for this staff. As Ms. Lori mentioned something about methane leak on the property, is it on the property or on the surrounding areas? Was there any leak found?
Staff has no knowledge of any leak within this property. I think a couple of years ago, there was leaks found to the east of this property.
And for the client, was there any Phase 1 or Phase 2 done on the property?
Hi, Hunter Troxel again. Can you clarify what you mean by Phase 1 and Phase 2?
Phase 1 study or Phase 2 study environmental, any leaks, any, yeah, pretty much for leaks?
I do not have any knowledge of any leak studies that have been done. There were several oil wells that have been abandoned on the property, I do know of that. And then, running along the east and the west of this property is Mojave Pipeline that was mentioned earlier, but we aren't aware of any leaks that have occurred at the, from the Mojave Pipeline, especially in our area, or specifically in our area.
And those oil wells, they have been capped and properly closed off?
Yes, they have been abandoned. I believe there was one in the northeast corner that was in the process of being capped, but it has, substantial work has been done by our client to ensure that they are being abandoned properly to current standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cor.
I would just add that we have, Brandon Martin also adding in response to Commissioner Cor. The project was essentially graded in 2006, at least the land. I'm not sure how that would happen if there wasn't Phase 1 soil testing for environmental concerns, just as a matter of the law. And we're a little shorthanded tonight because our project manager is sick and he's not able to be here, but I can hear him in the back of my head saying, "Oh, my gosh, why didn't you know?" But please don't, if you need us to, if it's a really pressing matter, I'll get him on the phone if I need to. Just let me know.
And, I'm sorry, you said the property has been graded?
My understanding is the property was graded as part of the earlier development effort in 2006.
But then, the wells are not capped off at that time?
I'm not sure when the wells were capped off.
Okay.
They were.
They were.
I've just been, I just don't know, but I was just told by engineering that the wells were capped off previous to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, the new technology. Thank you, Commissioner Cor. Commissioner Strickland.
I've got a, I guess, first question for staff. Speaking to takes and related to studies of habitat for protected species, the studies done in pre-construction, can you speak to in construction activities what the expectation is if burrows for kit foxes are found or protected species? They still have protection under the project, right?
That's correct. There is a biological study submitted, or completed and submitted to the state prior to ground disturbance, and that's at our, at the city level, it's a grading permit application, and there's a list of standard mitigation measures that the state applies if endangered species are found on the property. Depending on the particular species, there's a whole list of mitigation measures that are attached to the project, that the developer must comply with.
And they exist throughout the entire project, right? So we're not done talking about protection of the kit fox today when they start constructing homes. If they were to see a kit fox, then they have to follow those mitigated declarations, right?
It depends on the mitigation measures that the state applies to the project. There could, there could be a mitigation measure that requires them to provide artificial dens, or not. It just depends on a case-by-case basis. That is in the inventory of mitigation measures available.
Okay, thank you. And then, for the applicant, I think I had two questions. One was related to grading. This was graded previously. I've driven by this lot quite a bit. It's been graded for a while. Is the current development plan for the tract map to regrade again, or are you planning on using the grading as it is today?
The plan is to regrade the site. It was originally graded, I believe, back in 2006, and then, as I mentioned earlier, the project was abandoned due to the recession. So they got to grading and then stopped at that point. The grading will, the grading design has changed to accommodate the increase in lots. We've changed some road paths as well. As mentioned, this Mojave Pipeline, we have avoided crossing over their pipeline with our roads, so things of that nature have been redesigned.
Okay, cool, thank you. And then, following on Commissioner Cor, the capped wells, if there's any capping that's done above ground, will there be any protection installed by the owner during, or is everything going to be sub-ground, nothing to?
Everything, I believe, is underground.
Cool, great, thanks. And then, I guess the final question would be, if approved, when do we, when do we think construction would begin on the first phase?
That's largely dependent on how quickly we can get through plan review, and then, I believe there were some special studies for the, that our biological consultant would complete, I believe, starting this summer, there are more studies. I would imagine it depends on a plan check log and how quickly we can turn those around, maybe conservatively, six to 12 months, there's a range. Our developer intends to begin construction as soon as possible.
Okay, so we shouldn't see anything delaying this. You're expecting, once you get through plan check, you're ready to construct?
Yes.
Cool, thank you. No further questions, thank you.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes, so I think you guys asked a couple of questions that I was going to ask. I did read the letter, Ms. Pisante's, while that was submitted, and one thing you mentioned, and what is our obligation, or what would be customary staff regarding valley fever and any type of testing that happened at the grading process, or what is the requirement on that? That's the only question that wasn't answered yet.
I believe the developer is obligated to consult with Public Health Department from the county, and the county has protocols related to training onsite personnel and guidelines related to weather conditions, and whether construction activities would occur or not.
And at what time would that take place?
Prior to ground disturbance.
Prior to, okay. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Seeing no additional Commissioner questions, we will now move into the rebuttal period. As discussed, let me, we will move into rebuttal period. Please note, this is a five-minute total time for both sides. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will have a total of five minutes to make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of previous speakers, to ensure that everyone who wishes to provide rebuttal comments has a chance to do so. And as we last heard from those opposed to the project, we will begin with those in support of the project. If you'd like to come to the front to save transit time, please make your way, and we will begin with those in a five-minute total time for those in favor of the project. Please introduce, or...
My name is Brandon Martin, B-R-A-N-D-O-N-M-A-R-T-I-N. My name is Brandon Martin, B-R-A-N-D-M-A-R-T-I-N. No relation to Commissioner Martin. But addressing Commissioner Martin's concern, if it's not already a condition of approval, we will yield to the county's protocol for protecting construction workers from our valleys, valley fever concerns. I had, my father collapsed on stage in Texas as a result of his battle with valley fever, and we definitely want to make sure that we condition our product, our project to, to support the people who will be working on it and helping to build our homes here in our community. On the aesthetic issue, there's not really that much we can do. The bottom line is, I came up here and I discussed the economics of this. What, what the city's asked for and what the state is asking for in housing product has changed, and I think the economics of it has changed. It's true, there are houses in neighboring that are on larger lots. If we're going to make this affordable for people, they can't be those same large lots. It's just a different thing. We stand open to discussions if this is appealed, and hopefully it won't be, where we could have some kind of mitigation. I just don't understand how it could really pencil out. I also, frankly, from your commission's standpoint, creating a kind of informal viewshed protection precedent that you guys would put into effect by voting for that kind of protection just doesn't make sense for the economics of building here. That's something that has driven Orange County to disaster, and we don't need it here. In terms of, in terms of the Sierra Club's comments, again, you know, if we had a vesting map that would have been an environmentally inferior project by quite a bit, we would have been lettered by the Sierra Club. They would have written a very similar letter to they did, but we went ahead and changed it and created a drastically environmentally superior project, and yet we're still lettered. Perfection is the enemy of good, but we will certainly work with the Sierra Club to address any concerns that we can.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes, Hunter Troxel again. I will comment on Mr. Bowman's concerns. Unfortunately, that neighborhood that is just directly south of our project, there are no protected viewsheds at this time for that development, and I believe we addressed that, and then, planning staff addressed that comment earlier. And then, in terms of the increased density of the lots, we are still in compliance with R1 low-density zoning for single-family homes, excuse me, R1 single-family home zoning. The new, the updates to the municipal code allow up as little as 4,500 square feet, and so with most of our product being in the 5,000 to 6,000 range, we are above the minimum by a size, but as Brandon has mentioned here, this should allow a easier, a less, a smaller barrier, barrier to homeownership, to a lot of residents of the city. So I think this is all I have to say.
Seeing as, you're not speaking in favor of the project, I assume, right?
No, I just assumed there was nobody else.
Yeah, I'll formally close those in favor unless, yeah. So at this time, are there any other speakers wanting to provide rebuttal comments in favor of the project? Seeing none, we will close the rebuttal period for those in favor and move to the rebuttal period for those in opposition. As mentioned previously, this is a five-minute total time, so please be succinct, respect others wishing to make comments, and if you wish to make comments, I might recommend you move to the front row. So with that, we have five minutes on the clock. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Yeah, Lori Pesante again. The, the very existence of the questions that I heard tells me that the MND is totally inadequate. Those questions needed to have been answered before approval of this, right? It is improper to defer the formulation of mitigation measures until after project approval. It's totally, these need to be answered now, not after you approve things. They have to be answered now, right? And yes, there is a settlement on this property that hasn't really been mentioned in any kind of detail. Nobody here seems to know that there's already a settlement on this exact property. So I would highly recommend that you go back and look at that. Additionally, I just attended an oil well remediation conference. Those are a thing now, right? We have been poking holes in the ground for over 100 years, and as our city grew, that means that we developed on top of them. There are oil wells that have been abandoned that we don't even know where they are. They are so-called undocumented wells, no joke, that is what they're calling them. There is no reason to believe, because no analysis has been provided, no survey has been conducted, that there isn't something like that, and especially in this area, especially in this area. And even the USC professor who spoke as a keynote, who works for oil companies, by the way, said that you have to monitor wells forever, even if they have been properly abandoned and plugged and capped. And I hear nothing from the project proponent about monitoring in this area, nothing. We've already had the methane leaks at the Morningstar Development. We have to be smarter. That methane is 300 times more potent a greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. We cannot mess around with this. And one final note, it's a common last name, but I just want it for the record, is there any kind of conflict of interest between Mr. Martin and Mr. Martin? No, please don't take that personally, but I did want to note that for the record.
No, there is not. I know Brandon Martin, but no.
Okay. But no relation, no conflict?
No.
Fantastic.
Or I would have conflicted out, and I wouldn't have asked the questions I did.
Well, I've been to the Kern County Planning Commission, so you've got to ask these questions. You know what I'm saying?
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers wishing to speak in opposition and provide rebuttal comments? Seeing no additional rebuttal comments, I will now close the public hearing on the item and return it to the commission for comments and action. Commissioners?
Yeah, I want to thank the applicant for mentioning my concerns with, with valley fever. I too had a family member who nearly died in early 30s, was in ICU for several weeks over that, so it's something I take very personally. I think overall, I mean, this, it seems as though the applicant has, has complied with, with what they need to do, and additionally, you know, we do have a lot of folks that need to, average home price in Bakersfield now, I believe, is about $367,000. So, you know, this is a 25% reduction from when the first track in the early 2000s was about .31 of an acre at 269 lots, now at 363, 0.23 of an acre, so it is smaller. So I understand the neighbor who brought up, Jeremy, in your, your letter, you know, that the, you know, it could block the view in different things, but unfortunately, as it goes, you know, it appears to me, they, they have a right to build, and they've gone through what they've needed to, to do, to be compliant, and perhaps this allows more folks to, to have a single-family home in this town where, five years ago, the average home price was 260, 250. So we're really jumping up there, and we have to have these type of things so people can continue to have the American dream in our, in our great community. So that's just a few thoughts on my end, to my fellow commissioners and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland.
Yeah, thank you. So I kind of wanted to echo the same. This is kind of a great project location, like I said, I've driven by it quite a bit. It'd be a really good use for affordable homes. I tell people all the time, I'm originally from South Carolina, we didn't pay $300,000 for 5,400 square foot, right? So it's a culture shift to come to California and look at, now the standard is 4,500, right? So these are bigger than that, but it is the way California's going to handle the population density, and I, I know it's not a favorable thing, but if that's what we've got to do to make affordable housing, so people can get out of apartment locks and get into their own property, then I'm in support of that. Especially, this is a challenging location with the pipeline through it, with the abandoned wells, to find someone willing to develop on a property that has unique challenges and build a community, you know, I really look forward to that. You know, the only comment I would make is I would like to see a phased plan once that builds the park in Phase One and not Phase Two or Three. I understand the economics of it, but we do look at a lot of houses where we get Phase One or Two or Three done, we don't have the park, and then that's in the later phase, and you've got half the house is built and no park. I know we've got a public park nearby on this, but anyway, that's a soapbox, but I appreciate the applicant for bringing this forward, and if approved, I would like to see kind of where this goes in the next couple of years. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brent Oliver.
I just want to tell the, the lady back there from the Sierra Club that we, we do hear all your concerns, or at least I hear the concerns. I appreciate your passion for that. I appreciate your passion for our community and your kids and everybody else's kids. I do think that the developers have done a, a good job, and our staff has done a great job of doing the testing and the exploration, and there are measures in place that during construction, there are standards they have to meet, and as things come across, I mean, I've heard of a project out south of town that they got going, and man, they had to stop that week. So we, there are measures in place that if they run across biologics, things will be handled, and they will be held to those standards. So I just feel like the applicant and our staff has done their job, and I support, I support this track map as well.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Biddle?
Sorry. Not to repeat what everybody else was saying, but yes, I do hear you on the valley fever and looking at these lots and how we build, and making sure that we are good neighbors when we do do these developments is very important. So that is something that's watched the entire time, and valley fever is something that's on all of our minds, so we do expect our developers to take caution when they do develop. But this is the type of housing that we do need. Someone like me that lives by myself, it's not, you know, feasible for me to have a 15,000 square foot lot, but it is for something, it's about 5,000 square foot lot. So it's nice to see options. It's not quite the missing middle ground that we need, but it is something that's going to bring the densifications out there, that'll bring the schools and the grocery stores and all the amenities that make communities unique. So I am the commissioner for this area, so I would like to move to approve this project.
Thank you. I'm just going to give my comments, and then we'll, we'll, we'll note that Commissioner Bill, sorry. And Commissioner Biddle, I will gladly let you make the motion. I just want to say, I really appreciate the conversation tonight. I appreciate the Sierra Club showing up. I think we look about, we look at how we grow as a community. I think we have micro and macro decisions, and they aren't, they aren't exclusively independent, but I do think that, you know, the city is a policy, looking at things, distinctions like the last community without a climate action plan, the things that we don't address at a macro scale can sometimes make these conversations at a project scale very difficult because they're conversations that we need to have as a community. I applaud staff for the work that has been done in the aspects of biological resources, valley fever. I think those conversations have been going on in the city. I've seen a lot of movement, and, you know, I think we live in a time and we live in a state where those conversations are always moving, and I think, I want to both applaud and challenge the staff to just keep advocating for our community, but keep also learning because this, these are things that, at kind of a macro scale, we need to work on. That being said, I do, you know, I've been on this commission for a while, and vesting tentative track maps that never change is just part of doing business on this commission. Our city's policy grants extensions to where track maps that have, were approved when I was in high school are still working through the system, and it shores up, it ties up a lot of land from learning from our past because they are tied to a size, they are tied to a number of units, they're tied to a development style. I appreciate the work of this developer to bring back a project that appears to address, you know, when I look at this portion of the northeast, it is walking distance to a school, it is near a regional park. Our city has made a decision that we are moving in that direction. There is infrastructure in place. We can talk about the coveted grocery store or two, or other features that still need to make their way out there, but the community has made a decision that this, you know, and this decision was made in the early 2000s, and so, to me, I just want to applaud a project that makes a truly walkable path from all of these residents to a school. It doesn't require them to cross an arterial street or walk a quarter-mile out of their way to cross the street to come back. I think, you know, as we look at these projects that were dreamed up by our predecessors 20, 25 years ago, I just, I, I do appreciate that somebody saw an opportunity at this land to both meet a goal of California, which is to provide more housing, look at the challenge of, that as we've learned from the housing element, that providing housing is not a one-size-fits-all, and this meets that sort of middle area, and so, and then acknowledging circulation patterns, open space, and kind of playing off the Thorne Elementary Neighborhood. I just, I just wanted it to be noted that that, to me, is appreciated, and, but also, and so with that, I will return it to Commissioner Biddle to make her motion. Yeah. One more time, sorry.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve line item A6A.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
May I recommend to clarify and to document the applicant's statement that they will follow the county's, county health's protocol regarding valley fever, that we add that condition tonight?
Yes. Thank you for the recommendation, and can we have Commissioner Biddle make a third motion? Do you mind noting the addition of that?
I move to approve 6A with the addition of following the Kern County Health Department's, what is it called? Valley fever guidelines.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bill, Commissioner Martin. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Neal absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 6B.
Excuse me, Chair. May I read the appeal?
Yes, please read the appeal. Thank you.
You may appeal a decision by the, by the commission to the city council within 10 days of the commission's decision. The appeal must be submitted to the city, city clerk at 1600 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Your appeal must satisfy the requirements of the Bakersfield Municipal Code and may require a non-refundable fee, filing fee. If you are, if you are a resident within, sorry, if you are a property owner within the notice area, there is no charge. Thank you.
Thank you. May we move on to, is it formally 6B now, or is it 5A?
It's 5A.
Yes, that's what I thought, yeah. It's item 5A. Ms. Ing, would you please provide us your staff report?
Let me introduce Michael Bell, the planning technician for the planning department.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Michael Bell, development service technician with the development service department. I'm here to present agenda item 5A, comprehensive sign plan 24-0006. The project is located at 2201 Taft Highway, near the southwest corner of Taft Highway and Campaniani Street. The site is situated with, within the M1 and M2 zoning districts. The general plan designation for the site is LI and SI. The applicant in case signs is representing the property owner, Bakersfield 119 LLC. They're proposing a comprehensive sign plan with a deviation from the Bakersfield Municipal Code that includes the following: a proposed 75-foot-tall pylon sign where the ordinance permits a maximum height of 35 feet, a directional certified CATSKEL sign located at the center of, within the center at a height of 20, 21 and 1/2 feet, totaling 113 square feet, where the ordinance allows 6 feet and 1/2. six feet in height and six feet in area. The other two proposed signs meet the guidelines within the municipal code, which include a monument reader board on Taft Highway and a pylon sign on Campaniani Street. The wall signage within the project will conform to the sign standards as outlined in the municipal code. Planning spoke with the applicant and they have agreed to meet all requirements stated in the municipal code pertaining to the signs, specifically lighting standards and setback location restrictions for pylon monument signs. The sign is part of a previously approved conditional use permit. This U.P. permit authorized the development of facilities and services for travelers and truckers on-site. Uses include restaurants, a convenience store, fuel stations, and truck services. The proposed signage is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan related to the industrial development. We've received no public opposition and for the project, staff recommends the adoption of the resolution and the approval of Comprehensive Sign Plan 24-0006 as described. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. The applicant, Mr. Singh, is here to answer any questions pertaining to the proposal.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gurpreet Singh. I am the developer of this project under NK Signs. So, just request, because it's an identical sign for a truck stop, it's necessary to, for a, to develop a business. Please, whatever we will do is under the law of city laws and we are just, everything, whatever the guidelines, we will do before building permit. We will, it will be in the file and we just request to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in favor of the project? Seeing no additional speakers in favor, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Seeing no speakers in opposition, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Or staff? Please remember, this is not the time to express opinions, only ask questions.
Oh, you can take mine.
Commissioner Brent Oliver.
Yeah. Okay. I have a question for staff about our guidelines on the LED message board. I have experienced several signs in our city that are extremely bright and this looks to be an awfully large sign and I would like to know where those standards are and how they were addressed in looking at this applicant, application.
My name is Tony Haquez, Principal Planner for the Planning Department. With these signs, I've spoken to the applicant, Mr. Singh, and he said that these LED lights, lighting or illumination will have dimming functions to it. Therefore, if there's anything that is too bright for it, that he can always dim it down.
So, just to clarify, there would be a complaint procedure that would go through if there was constituents that were concerned about the lighting emanated from that sign?
That would be one result. Yes.
Does that answer your question? Or, okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Brent Oliver. Commissioner Strickland.
Thank you. I'll try not to make opinions here, even though my comments and questions tend to blend. So, I just want to confirm a couple of items. I've already talked to staff on some of these items, but I wanted to bring them back up. So, can you, Tony, do you mind explaining on Taft Highway, the two signs allowed on Taft Highway and the frontage requirements to have signs that close together?
Yes, the proposal is two, excuse me, pylon signs, one being a 35-foot and the other being a 75-foot. With the requirements of the city standards for signs, the 75-foot pylon sign that would be located at the, along Taft Highway to the eastern, east boundary, it would be 100 feet away from the existing sign there to the east of United Rental to meet our standards. Also, the two signs, proposed signs there on Taft Highway would require a minimum of 50 feet distance between them.
Sure. But there, the frontage road is sufficient to have two signs there within the city code?
Yes. The frontage road consists of over 500 linear feet.
Okay, great, thank you. And then tying on to Commissioner Brent Oliver's question around the LED, can you confirm city municipal code does cover requiring dimming features on signs, even if they're in the freeway-oriented zone? Those signs still require dimming?
Yes.
Okay, so, so no condition needed to ask for dimming, even if they say they're going to put it in, they're required to regardless, right?
That is correct.
Okay, cool.
Vice Chair, thank you.
Cool, yeah, no worries. And then just to confirm, there's no condition needed to require, so I'm backward on the map because it's, north is down, but I want to say to the west is the United Rentals. Is that correct or no? You know what, there's a United Rentals facility nearby that's going to have the large 75-foot sign.
It's to the, the United Rental that's existing, the sign is to the east.
East, okay.
And yes, from that sign, the proposed sign would have to be 100 feet away from the United Rental.
Got it. And there's no condition required for that, that's again, going back to city development standards, that they just have to do that regardless of where it shows on their current map?
Correct. Following the municipal code of 17.60, the standards and setbacks and distances are there and would have to be met unless a deviation was requested and there was no deviation upon that.
Cool, thank you so much. No further questions?
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just wanted to confirm with staff and I think you did make that clear, Ginny, but I also wanted my fellow commissioners to hear this as well. One question that I had, I mean, understanding M2 limit signs like this at 35 feet, but I wanted to know, 35 feet above grade, but I wanted to know if there were others in the area, specifically those that are of a similar business, if they were also afforded that same 75-foot sign. In their justification letter, they mentioned, you know, it allows us to stand out and it's great and it looks, it's a very nice sign, Mr. Singh. And so, I just wanted to make sure they were afforded that same luxury and they were. That Loves Travel on the northwest corner of Taft Highway and H also got the exemption, you know, for 75-foot sign. So, I think that that helps me because I always want to make sure that the competition is fair, that if we allow one in the gas station or beautiful, beautiful first-class truck stop, rather, excuse me, also got that same, that same exemption so that that way we have fairness across the board and that was the case. So, that's why I just wanted to make that comment today and that's why I wanted to see it pulled, so forgive me for wasting more time on it, but I think that's important. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Chair Cader.
Yes.
I just had a comment in regards to Commissioner Brent Oliver.
Yes.
I found the section in the municipal code that talks about how we're able to regulate the brightness and so, it is covered in our municipal code. It's 17.60060, subsection A, subsection E.
Thank you. It's really important to me to know that we have a process, that we've addressed that and that I might be calling about a sign that's near, near where I live and now that I know they have dimmers, that's amazing. Thank you.
Not under the purview of this hearing, but good to know. Yeah, perfect, yeah. Appreciate it. Okay, I see no other commissioner questions and as there are only speakers in favor, I'm going to opt if the speaker, that we forego the rebuttal because there's no speakers in opposition.
It's fine, yes, you're great.
Then I will close the hearing and move to the commission for comment and action.
So moved to, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Oh, okay, oh. Let me, I will note your intent and provide, Commissioner Strickland.
He has to say it twice now.
But maybe not three times. Yeah, we'll see.
So, I just want to make a couple of comments. Mr. Singh, I really appreciate you coming here. I know that this is a consent item and we typically don't, it's rarer that we pull consent just because they're usually developed by staff. It's all understood, so I appreciate your time. I'm sorry for that. I would like to thank staff. I had quite a bit of questions on this one and I've worked with Ms. Singh and Tony on getting those clarified over the weekend, this morning or this evening. Just as a general comment, a lot of the questions I had are, when I look at staff development plans and sign development plans, whatever comes in from the applicant, I try and look at it from how the public would look at it, right? If the public lived in the area, they pulled up the map set and they want to say, hey, you know, is this something I want in my area or is this something that fits or whatever? And I just had a lot of issues with some inconsistencies on this map set. There's a couple of tables for sign criteria that don't match the drawings, that don't match the comprehensive sign plan, that don't match the overall site plan location. And I think staff are clarifying that with me, but just as a comment, you know, it's difficult for the public to be involved on things like this as it is, right? It's hard for engagement on the public typically and it's not incredibly helpful if the drawings are inconsistent, right? So, a lot of my questions were really just, well, what are they actually putting here? What is the actual size? It was all in that CAT scale, which is probably the least important sign on this whole deal. Similar comment on the drawings that we get in the staff plan. It is difficult to read the frontage numbers. Some of these don't have measurements, so the sign locations are showing kind of right against the street. So, a lot of my questions are, hey, this is well within the 25-foot from the property line. This is, you know, we're seeing 300-foot here and the code is 500-foot for two signs on the same frontage. And I understand, Mr. Singh, I'm sorry for bringing your project through this, but I really just wanted to express those, that sometimes these are a little difficult to see. Either it's an upload issue or the raw files. So, a lot of these questions are really turning into clarifications on drawings that are a little hard to read. So, I really want to thank staff for their time this week. Thanks again, Mr. Singh, for coming. I wish you luck again and thanks for, Commissioner Martin, for bringing up the competing gas station across the freeway. And again, this is only 100 or so feet outside the freeway-oriented zone, so shouldn't even come to us other than it's just outside of it. So, again, appreciate all the time today and I'll let Mr. Martin make his motion again.
All right, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second time, Mr. Chairman. All right. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Brent Oliver. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Neal absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 7, New Business.
Ms. Ying, would you please provide us with the new business items?
Tonight is the night that you will select a new chair or vice chair and is the termination of this commission, who those people will be.
Do we have a nomination?
So, it's actually in your script if you want to look at it.
Oh, thank you. Whoa. All right, then let it be known, nominations are open for a chair. There is no need for a commissioner to be physically present to be nominated. Are there any nominations? Yes. Who wants to speak?
I would like to nominate Adam Strickland.
Oh. I would like to second that nomination.
I'll third that nomination.
All right, I think, are there any other nominations?
Does your script have my speaking part too?
Says nominations are now closed unless you, I think you can reject the nomination.
No, I'll accept their nomination, but.
Okay.
You accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination, yeah.
Okay, so then, there were, there were three nominations, so then we do need to motion and second, so is there a motion to elect Commissioner Strickland to chair?
I'll make a motion to elect Adam Strickland as our chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Biddle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Corr. We will conduct a roll call vote. Keeping it old school.
Commissioner Strickland.
Yes.
Commissioner Biddle.
Yes.
Commissioner Brent Oliver.
Yes.
Commissioner Corr.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Neal, absent. Motion passes with Commissioner Neal absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Nominations are now open for vice chair. There is no need for a commissioner to be physically present for a nomination. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Biddle for vice chair.
Okay, Commissioner Biddle.
I'll, I'll second.
Commissioner Corr.
I'll second as long as you'll accept it before I, before I throw in my third.
I'll accept.
All right, then I throw my third.
Fantastic, all right. Cool. Are there any other nominations? Okay, the nominations are now closed. May I have a motion to elect Commissioner Biddle to vice chair?
I'll motion.
Commissioner Martin, may I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Commissioner Strickland. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Cader.
Yes.
Vice, Commissioner, wait, Chair Strickland.
Yes.
Commissioner Biddle.
Yes.
Commissioner Brent Oliver.
Yes.
Commissioner Corr.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Neal absent.
Fantastic, all right, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number eight, Agenda Item 8, Communications.
Does staff have any communication items?
Yes, I do. I'd like to congratulate Vice Chair Biddle and Commissioner Brent Oliver for reappointment to the Planning Commission for another four years. And we will have a meeting May 15th.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 9, Commission Comments.
Does any commissioner have any comments? Commissioner Strickland.
Thank you, I prepared an acceptance speech.
I know.
No, I just want to say thank you for the nomination, especially the acceptance of that and I just want to say, I was fortunate enough to come in under Chair Bashir Tash, who's gone to bigger and better things and at the time, Vice Chair Cader. And the last year under Chair Cader has been great. I think one of the most professional people I've met in both private and personal life and public speaking has been just great to learn from. I really, really hope that next year goes just as smoothly and if not, I look forward to blaming it on someone else. So, thank you so much and sorry for, sorry for delay in the evening.
I was sad, thank you for the comments, the kind words. I am really excited to see both of you in this new capacity. I look forward to sitting at the edge and moving away from the middle. But no, but just thank you for taking the responsibility. Thank you for, it's been a pleasure to serve with all of you. It is shocking that Commissioner Brent Oliver has already been reappointed because I feel like you just joined us. That fell a little quick, but congratulations. If it had gone the other way, that would have felt kind of weird, so thank you, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, but I just want to say, we look forward to the upcoming, yeah. And I know their commissioner, and I'm sad that I cannot introduce you to my family who is now off creating what I'm sure will be heritage-level pottery that we make ourselves, so we shall see. But with that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 10, Adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:39. Have a great evening. Thank you.[1748.42]